So this evening, we are going to be speaking to something really, really special and dear to myself as a younger sister of mine. Born and bred in the Petersburg area. So if you're watching on YouTube live or alternatively, if you're watching yourself on Facebook live, you will already notice that I'm speaking about my sister Shazia Basir. So she's going to be on air tonight to handle your calls. Well, more importantly, just to really find out about the young lady behind the brand of Shazia. If you would like to get involved, please do not forget to give us a call on 01733602133. Alternatively, you can WhatsApp us anytime you would like, and it's 0745278978. As always, this today in specific, I've got a really wonderful conversation that I want to share with everybody. And I'd love you to understand that this individual has gone through adversities. We as how does a single parent, a single mum move from being a born and bred UK person? Having faced divorce, having two beautiful young children at that time, maybe even loss of a death in the family. Her mum passed away and I can fully connect with that personally, as everybody who's on air today knows that last year, my mum passed away in December. And with those two adversities have faced the inner debt, self-esteem hitting rock bottom. But here's the big but for everybody who's listening tonight. But who stood back on her feet, who decided that the only person who's actually truly going to make the difference in her life is God above within her herself. She's turned her whole life around and she's become an advocate to other individuals and other women, a true inspiration in their world, assisting them on a one-to-one basis. Whether it's from how do I get myself to the next step in my life? How do I get myself out of divorce? How do I even bring my self-esteem back up? How do I get myself refocused? Motivating them at the core, empowering them from within to step up and move forward on a national basis. And getting yourself to being a politically recognized individual who has changed thousands of lives on the planet. This evening, I'd like to introduce my sister, Shazia Basir. You're welcome.
Thank you, Sukie. I'm very honoured and privileged to be on your show today. You've absolutely magnified me a thousand times more than I really am.
Oh, wow. You know, that just proved your humility here, Shazia. The reality of life is that without a doubt, all of what I've just said is true. And I haven't even touched on the reality of it because I've got to know you in the last, I'd say, six months to a year. And what I've seen is an innate, innate ability to stand up for your own, stand up for the rights of others as well, which I think is beautiful. This is not a political discussion or a conversation. This is the Empowerment Hour Show with myself, Sukie Wahihwala. If you've just tuned in, do get involved, do connect with us, do text, do without a doubt, text on 0745278978 on WhatsApp. Or alternatively, just call into the main studio, which is 01733602133. So once again, Shazia, welcome, welcome, welcome. How do I even start with a conversation? But I, you know what? You have been more than just an empowerment, but more than an inspiration. You've been more than a motivator. You're an individual which I see as somebody who's, who's the real deal, who's quite honest in what they are trying to achieve in life. Would that be a good synopsis?
It is, yes, because I've always, at a very young age, I always, always used to listen to my inner voice. And I looked around with my parents, my siblings, friends, everyone around in the community. And, and as you, as you're aware, in all cultures, that it was always like, what are people going to say? Anything I wanted to do, what are people going to say? So that was the catchphrase that I sort of grew up to. And deep inside, I knew that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala had a bigger purpose for me.
Yes.
And that was to serve mankind. And that was to serve. And truly, real happiness for me is when I make others happy.
Yes. And that's the, the reference there would have been to Allah Dala, which was basically in specific, a universal energy that we all understand and believe in. And, and you know what, Shazia, you're very, very true there and very honest in the fact that every human being, would you believe that every single human being should research themselves, look inwards and find what gift they were supposed to be sharing to this world?
Yes. I really, really believe that because all the answers that we are always searching for outside and others are inside us. And when you're quiet and you're, you're sort of, you know, you're actually in a room where you're meditating. I'm very spiritual, by the way.
I truly can see.
And deep inside, you can hear the answers and they're the answers that will move you forward.
So would you suggest those answers, those questions and the answers within themselves? Would you classify that as somewhere in the region of, let's say, intuition? Intuition meaning when the unconscious brain, you know, our heart centre, truly understands and knows which way we're supposed to be going. But sometimes the brain muddles it up and it's the connection between the two when you're clear through meditation and things of this sort of nature?
I've always followed my heart and I believe intuition is, it's like a sat nav system in a car, but in a human being.
Oh, I love that. I love that, sat nav.
So it's your sat nav. Now, if you follow it, you'll guide it. You won't have any conflict inside when you listen to intuition. Because sometimes when you want to do, do something, you want to go somewhere. I mean, many times I've ended up somewhere just by following my heart. And I've always, I do not regret anything I've done in my life.
God bless you for that. Now, just to take a different conversation here. You've had some adversities, if I can take you back if you don't mind. I mean, it's a bit earlier. But in the first half, as all of our listeners in our tribe tend to listen to the inspired tribe, they tend to hear and they realise that in the first half, we tend to get very nitty gritty about you and your personal life as well. Now, I'm not talking about your integral, integral personal life. I'm talking about something along the lines of, you know, when you were mentioned in your bio to start off with, you had a divorce as a face-off, you know, in your conversation. And when you were speaking just a moment ago, you were talking about the framework of, of the community and what they would say. Do you feel that women as a whole, and I mean specifically women and of all faith, of all backgrounds in nature, do you believe sometimes that maybe there is a framework imposed upon females and ladies in specific that they have to live up to?
I think we're conditioned by society and is generation after generation after generation. So you're either following like a sheep or you can be different and stand up for your rights and, you know, walk alone.
Wow.
But I, I knew that deep inside, when I listened to family and community and I followed some of the traditions that were, now I look back and I realise they weren't serving me. They weren't serving my purpose.
I understand.
And, and I see even now, you know, the younger generations, they seem to follow what society says as well. They seem to be conditioned by status quo. So, you know, okay, I'll give you an example nowadays.
Great, if you can.
I mean, like weddings nowadays, they have to be glamoured. They have to have the best of the venues and the best of the food. I've seen youngsters, they want the best of cars. And they haven't got the values to make that marriage work out. But yet they've spent thousands and thousands because they feel that they have to live up to what society or standards that are set out there for them.
I truly understand that. Now, that makes a lot of sense actually of, of how one is seen within the community, within the, the community as a whole. I'm talking not just the Asian community as a whole in, in the country. You know, any peers that one has, but you know, whether we're deemed as people who are holding back and don't have the money or whether we're people who are splashing out and becoming that way. So that's a nice, nice way of explaining the social condition. So in specific, in your life, and if it's okay for me to ask this question.
Of course.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm asking something a bit deeper than this. So in your actual journey in your life, because you've stemmed an inner core. You know, that obviously comes from, I call this in a very social environment. So I'm a speaker, a public speaker in the international world as well. Anybody who watches me, they know this anyway. So we talk, I talk specifically around having an inner core, a grounded inner core. That is usually carved by what we call a healing process, which is a form of feelings and pain and reflection. But more importantly, it's about the healing process, meaning you can, so you can prove the scars and you can actually talk about this. Now, I, from other times when I was speaking to you, Shazia, we spoke about the adversities that you had in your life. But you said something really beautiful and I would like to just for you to expand on this. That because the empowered tribe is, they, they really are interested in how we can move themselves further forward as well. You said something very specific, which was along the lines of, Sukie, I believe I was chosen for this journey. And I believe I was chosen for the, for the experiences that I've had in my life so that I can assist others in the same vein. Please, you know, this is such a magical thought. Please help me understand. I mean, if the people are listening. So how do you feel that you have qualified yourself in that context?
I truly feel that it's, it's a divine intervention.
Wow.
I've been through so much, so much adversity, so much pain and struggles that it's absolutely unbelievable for me to look back and say, I've been through that. My journey began when I was at the age of 30. My young son was sitting next to me. I've got two beautiful sons. So it's my older son, we were sitting, doing his homework. And he just looked up to me and he said, mum. And I think he was doing some work, homework from school about careers and things or what they want to be when they're older. So it's a typical thing that we say that we want you to be a doctor or a lawyer or a scientist.
Aspirational, absolutely. Yes.
And he looked up to me and he said, mommy, did you never want to be anything? And I think that was my, I think that was my why moment. That of course, I'm a mum and that of course is a great role in itself.
I think it's one of the most important roles, yes.
Then made me connecting, I sort of looked inwards and connected with my inner child. And it took me back to when I was 19 and I wanted to go on to uni. And I wanted to go and have a career and I was always interested in politics. But there was always setbacks and there was always negative things happening that. And I think I got swallowed into this vacuum of society.
Bless you.
I followed it, followed the conform of society. And so it was then that I made a decision that I'm going to come out of darkness. I will now follow my mission. I will give up what is negative in my life. I will keep the positives and I will work hard. Indeed, it was a struggle, a real struggle because I went through divorce. It wasn't very easy. And it was because we were two different people. We weren't compatible. And also I believe that it wasn't meant to be. And I wished him the best on his journey. But, and he was a great father and still is a great father to the boys. But obviously it wasn't meant to be for us because I had a bit, I was on a mission. And I truly believe that when you're in a journey, that God sends people that come into your, into your life to help you get to the next level. Some will come, some will go. But it's your own journey and you are the driver behind the driving wheel.
Now, that is an absolute optimum message for everybody who's listening. And I hope you're enjoying this as much as I am because Shazia actually doesn't realise how good she actually is as a human being, as a person. And then she's forever downing her own ability in her own conversation. So for me, it's a very personal pleasure as well to have you here on the show. So once again, if anybody's got any questions, please don't hold back, do connect, do text, and I'll, I'll go through them in a moment. So Shazia, you're really, really beautifully eloquently popping together a sentence or a storyline that she explains to me how a vast majority of individuals out there are feeling. You know, one minute they're, they're perfectly within their world. And my question here is that having been a mum or a dad or a home mum, home dad or being a career path individual, neither of them are right or wrong. They are just right for you at that time in life.
Of course.
We mentioned this conversation. So anybody who's listening and can understand that, that at some times, some stage in our life, we get to a juncture which actually changes the way we listen, think, and our life changes. Does that make sense? We actually decide that we want different things. And in this particular case, the, you know, the Almighty sent you a lovely message via your own son. It impacted you enough for you to become the voice of others. So just to touch, if I can, a little, because I know you're very much involved in the women societies as well. And if we don't, before the break, if you don't mind, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the how, how you overcame death and how it led to a bit of debt as well. But just before we move on to that context, what exactly did you, do you do in your, let's go back a second, let's just go straight with the understanding. I mean, I think you've been through one adversity, one adversity in specific with reference of divorce. How did you overcome that thought process of, I suppose you could say self-beating? Want to an extent saying that I don't think I'm worthy anymore? Because I'm sure there's listeners here who have those inner thoughts as well. I mean, did you, I'm sorry we haven't rehearsed this in any way. And I'm just having you here on stage being live this evening. Do you have any words to share? Any, any, anything you did intend to dig deep? You, you touched on having a mission. You touched on selection from above. How did you physically get yourself out of those mindsets though?
Well, Sukie, like I said, my, this is my personal story. This is my journey. So I'm absolutely, you know, happy to tell it live as it was. It's like going back and reliving the moments. There was no scripture. There was no autocue. There was nothing to rehearse. And I remember moment from moment, when, while I was going through my divorce, I was separated, obviously at the age of 30. I didn't go on to uni because I got married at the age of 19. I love my parents. They were my role models. They were the most loving parents. But, but like I said, like every other parent, they were also conditioned by society. So for them to live through that was normal to them.
Absolutely.
And so my, my, my parents, my siblings and my boys mean the world to me. Family is a very, very integral part of my life. So what I thought is, well, I'm not going to move away from here. I'm going to stay here, make that change. So when I had, at the time of my separation, I had two young children, one was 13, one was about seven. I'm two lovely boys. So obviously I couldn't go to and get a full-time job. I didn't have, you know, a degree in any subject to go and get a professional job. So I started from scratch. I started to work at, with a friend. And I'll give him a mention, Sukhinda.
Sukhinda Singh, yes, I know you very well.
Or organisation, languages and culture. He was bringing actually secondary education and courses in the city. To, it was actually aimed at women like myself, so who didn't go on to universities in different cities and who were now mums or later in life, they wanted sort of a change of skill. So that's where I undertook my H and D in business and I also worked there as well. I worked part-time. Obviously, I had debt mounting up. It was very, very hard, even though I had family support. There were certain people that were friends at that time that were there. And then there were certain people that leave your life. And you sometimes think to yourself, well, I did so much for so-and-so, but why are they not there for me today? But the truth is, you are your own best friend. You have to motivate yourself. I had very good days, very bad days. On my good days, I got things done. On my bad days, I allowed me to have a rest because on your journey, sometimes you have to have a break.
That is an amazing, amazing message. Now, if anybody else is taking, taking empowerment from that conversation, it's not to beat yourself when you're down, it's to allow yourself to rest and return back up. Now, whenever I do, whenever I talk in specific around this topic, around regeneration, thoughts and time management and thinking process, we call it DFT thinking. One of the key elements is that rest is equal to action. So if you're acting and you're taking actions that serve you, which is like getting up and taking education, studying, assisting others, you should always equally rest as well. This is music to my ears, Shazia. It's amazing. Please continue.
So, and then obviously I started with a part-time jobs and getting education, trying to build my life as well as managing the children because they were going through divorce as well. So it wasn't easy for them. And there was a lot of negativity around in the community. And, and it's, it's a stigma for, for women who want to go through divorce or who are on their own. But I'm very thick-skinned and the criticism doesn't bother me at all because at the end of the day, it's between me and God. And I think what liberated me was my faith. And I think that inside my heart, I believed that God's there. As long as God is with me, nobody can bring me down.
Wow, that's a beautiful message.
That kept me going. I, I believed if Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is with me, I will get through this. He is my light. He's, he's made my path for me and my journey. And if these struggles will, will serve my purpose, I will continue with them. And that's every day used to be my mantra.
I'm not joking. This is kind of, this is becoming quite an amazingly enlightening interview. And I thank you for this, Shazia, for being here in your own capacity and being so open and honest about this. Because, you know, sometimes in the political agenda, you've always got to have this, this face on. And this is the first time I'm kind of like taking away this mask. And we have really seen truly, Shazia, and your true motivational inspiration within yourself as well. Your message there was really powerful about realising that you yourself and your connection with your maker, with the universe, with the spiritual realm, with ether, within every element of your life and in specific in God, that that's all you need. You need yourself and yourself to pick yourself up with an unbelievable and devout faith that it will work out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Brilliant. You know, this is just, it's amazing. So did, if I can just push you forward a little bit about this. Because as always, we run so short on time so quickly. We have four minutes left, would you believe, Shazia? That's it, on the first half. If anybody's enjoying themselves today, please, please do stay with the second half. Because we're going to get deeper and much more focused around how Shazia actually lives her life today and how she is creating change in the worlds of others. And in specific, becoming the, the I can't do to an I can do mindset within all the women that she actually touches and communicates with on a daily basis. We've still have a few minutes yet, but Shazia, I'm going to ask you a question if you can just take this one stage further. How have you managed to keep your, your inner stillness? And I know your, your understanding is that we're talking about, we have a belief in God. But sometimes we ourselves disassociate ourselves from our inner self. Does that make sense? We is knowing you is one of the key things. And I think the reason why I'm asking this question is because I've met you so many times now. And every single time, what shines through is your ability to know yourself in the sense of this self-belief in yourself, in your journey, in your mission. In your own words, what do you feel your mission is?
My mission, my mission is to serve others.
And in, in a context of, we spoke about your aim and your focus. I mean, how, you wake up in the morning, you have a mantra, you say, wow, this is what I'm going to do. This is what I'm going to believe in it. So what follows the mantra of, I trust God? What follows it? What's the, what's the thing that stimulates you? Because everybody should have that, right?
I want to inspire women around the world to change from I can't do to I can do.
Wow, what a, what a message. I can't do to I can do. And is it specifically in any one particular sector, any one particular BAME environment? You know, is it that? Was it anybody?
I think it's to anyone listening. I mean, yes, I want to inspire women, but there are men out there as well.
That's wonderful to hear.
And one thing I will say, and I'll pick it up after the break, is very important. To, to, to change your life, if you're not happy with something, you have to let go. By holding on causes more damage. If you let go and you let the right things come into your life and you keep your focus on the goal, set small goals each time you achieve a goal and look at, keep focused on the bigger picture.
Wow, that's just said it all, hasn't it? I'm going to drop the mic now. What a beautiful message, you know, to be able to sit there and let go and move forward and assist other people, you know? I'm sure you've had overwhelming in your life.
There were times I had a lot of overwhelming. I was in tears when my mother passed away. I'm asking viewers to, in this blessed month, to pray for my mother's soul. She was the most beautiful woman that I ever knew. And she always taught us that, you know, to be kind to others. And there's some of the values that she's given me. That was a very, very overwhelming work for me, going through divorce and then going passing, you know, when my mum passed away. And I, and coming, overcoming debt as well. And I saw people around me and I see a lot of friends, you know, people from all cultures turning to drink, turning to drugs. But I realised that these were short fixes. You have to keep the long-term vision and that energy you seek and that happiness is within you and your connection with God.
So beautifully said. Now, I cannot believe how fast the time has gone, team. That's nearly 26 minutes gone. We are in our last 10 seconds. I'm just going to share something very quickly. If you'd like to connect with Shazia or if you'd like to understand how you can get yourself focused back on, listen to us in our second half. We're going to come very, very quickly. And this is how a single mum has turned her life around and actually become a politically successful individual on the Empower Hour with yourself, my host, Sukie Wahihwala. I'd love to see you very shortly. See you soon. Welcome back, everybody. This is Sukie Wahihwala once again. And we are here this evening on Salaam Radio with the Empower Hour Show on every Tuesday. And at the moment, through the month of Ramzan, Ramadan, in specific, we're an hour early. So we're between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. Otherwise, we'd usually be every single Tuesday between 7:00 and 8:00. I think we've got another one or two shows and then we're back to normal timing again. But today, this evening, we have an amazing individual who everybody knows as councillor, Shazia Basir. But thing is, she has, today, we're taking away the councillor part of her. And we're just talking about Shazia behind the mask, behind this public service environment. And if you've been listening in the first half, you will have thoroughly enjoyed all of the conversations we've had. She's spoken openly about her own adversities in life and how she's overcome them. And, and she's been given some amazing one-niners and I'm going to introduce it back in. Shazia, please welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this evening, I'm just going to talk a little bit more about what you just touched on just before we finished the last event, the last half. And it was basically going through a process of understanding of changing your life. So changing your life if you're not happy with something. Yep. So if you're not happy, you've got to change something. There are so many individuals out there. Whether we talk about the individuals such as we have Seneca and individuals who are all very much in that mindset about if I, if a man does not know which harbour he is making for, no wind is the right wind. Now, if you try to change your life, but without knowing where you want to be, you don't even know where you're there. I mean, the answer to the question is that the moment, the second a man knows which harbour he is making for, any wind is the right wind. So this really does apply to what you're saying there. If you don't like something in life, change it. But change it with a clear vision, is that right? So that they can actually understand that you're actually there at that particular moment, take the moment in. So what your vision has been to change the worlds of late, something. And may I, may I just ask you to repeat yourself if you don't mind? What is your morning motivator, your vision of where you're going?
For me, one thing is very, very important. And this is something that I always say to myself that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala created you as an individual and you're a special person in this world. Your happiness lies within you.
Love it.
Not outside. And I think as a society, we have, we have expectations. And we have big expectations of our loved ones, friends, colleagues. Happiness does not lie materialistic things. And this is especially for the youth of nowadays. And your happiness does not lie in other people's hands. So if there's something in your life that doesn't serve its purpose, that is troubling you, now this could be a job. It could be a marriage. It could be a relationship. It could be a hobby that you're doing, which is bringing you down. And simple solution is to accept that pain and to make that change.
Accept the pain, identify it and make the change that serves you, yes?
Yes, to make you a lighter and happier person.
And what's your view? What's your view on individuals living by material conversation? Because what we were talking about here is how others see you. We spoke about the weddings earlier on and I'm not ostracising this. Absolutely. One should enjoy themselves in that context. But it's, it's the holy month of Ramzan, so Ramadan. I'm just basically being very, very clear with the audience that this is not about condoning or condemning any of those particular actions. It's just whatever's right to yourself and it's the intention behind it, isn't it?
Yeah. I think one thing you can't control is what is going on around you. But what you can control is your mindset.
I love it. Absolutely.
When you can control your mindset, everything in this universe, I believe, that comes from God is a divine energy, is a positive energy. It flows freely. It's in abundance. Whatever you need to get through life, you will get. Do not compare your lives with. Whatever you need to get through life, you will get. Do not compare your lives with others.
I love it.
You can't com- compare your life with others or to live to others' expectations. Like I said, a lot of pressure is being put on young families when they spend on marriages enormous. And I mean thousands and thousands. And you sadly hear after six months, they're divorced.
Hmm. And and that obviously could be something, and we're not trying to understand that the people who are spending the money are going through divorce. This is not a conversation around that. This is about the possibilities. And could it be better used elsewhere, maybe even to establish the family, maybe buying a house and a car? But to take it into a different direction if I can. So somebody sitting there, they've got adversity in their life, they're listening. How did, how do you, in this day, you know, actually assist others to get out of this environment? Do you work with people? Do you help them? I know you're a councillor, but.
Um, before I became a councillor, I mean, from a very young age, I I used to do, um, help people in the community. And then, um, I started to, uh, get involved in a lot of charity work nationally and locally. And the, I, I want to tell you, Sukien, and you're also aware of this as well.
Please, please do.
Um, like you need a teacher in life in in schools, like for geography and for history. You also need a spiritual leader. To help you grow. And I'm also a disciple of Hazrat Bira Alaudin Siddiqui Sabrahamatul Alay.
Oh, wow.
And they were my spiritual, uh, guide, my spiritual leader. And, and it's with their prayers and their guidance and that where I am today.
Wow, such a beautiful conversation there. So the, the message that you're sharing is very important for people to have. People around them, if you even, like, for example, you have a geography teacher, you have a geography lesson, you have a mathematical teacher and a mathematical teacher as well and a lesson. So in life, I think somewhere, I think what you're trying to say is that we fall behind with having a spiritual teacher or a spiritual guide in some way. And this doesn't mean to to weaken one's feeling. It's actually the guide. And in specific, you're talking about Bida Siddiqui Saab, which is, uh, I had the good fortune of meeting just a few days ago. You find the enlightened individuals who actually are what we call a Bram Gyanis, which means people who will open up the Ghan within you. Ghan meaning, Bram meaning, the person who is above the teacher. So they ignite the guru within you. Does that make sense? The teacher, the guru, being from darkness to light. That's basically what guru means. So you've had this light shed upon yourself. And, and has it, was it helpful in your dark times? Did you ever have any situations or times when you, when you actually used to reach out and probably get some assistance?
I, while I was going through these adversities, I did go through depression. I went through anxiety. I closed up. I felt, like I said, certain people left my life. There was friends that were too busy, there were family people that were too busy. And God, and God sent different people in.
Hmm. We mentioned Sukhavin this thing earlier on as well, and a few.
To help, to, to be able to talk to, to help me with my journey. Um, and it, again, like I said, it was overwhelming. There were times when I thought, what else is going to happen? I can't, I can't go through anymore.
No more, yeah.
No more. You, you feel to yourself, no more. But like I said, when my mum passed away. And for losing a loved one, and especially your mother, is the biggest loss of your life. But then I also know that God loves you seventy times more than your mother.
I like that equation.
And, and that kept me going, that Allah swt created me, he looks after me, he provides me, um, he's got my back.
He's got your back. That's such a beautiful, beautiful thought. So for individuals who have a different thought process and thinking within, um, putting a name or a focus to the entity or the collective consciousness, or whether we call it Allah, or whether we call it God, uh, or Wahiguru, whichever in principle or Pakistan. My question to yourself is that, do you believe that there's any difference? Because I don't think, when we had this lovely conversations, is, is it all the same? On an, on an energy level?
I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm very, uh, spiritual. So for me, um, you know, religion is a man in a church thinking of fishing. Spirituality, spirituality is a man fishing but thinking of God. God is presence in our hearts, everywhere around us. And the most core thing is, if we don't have humanity in our hearts,
Good bless.
we can't be a follower of any religion, whether it's Islam, Sikhism, Hinduism, Christianity, any other religion.
So the, the first message you're saying is actually is the, uh, the core of love, attention for humanity within itself, which is, that's beautiful to hear.
Peace, light.
So, so nice. So thank you for your amazing conversation so far. And we've had a couple of people on there. Um, just I'm going to go to, it's the position within our time, we say, uh, Ruxana Akhtar is saying hi to everybody here and also Pravind, my, my wife as well, she's doing a brilliant interview, Shazia and Sukhi, truly inspiring. So, uh, she's a strong follower of the Empower Hour show and in specific, she loves you as well. So a question to yourself, Shazia, what are you up to today? Because it's not all about that doom and gloom. You really have stood yourself up in your own stead. You're a very amicable and a very approachable but very strong, grounded young lady. So I am, I would not believe that you have not inspired others around you. So, you know, have you had any of these sort of lovely conversations as you go around and and create change and motivate other women and men, as you just mentioned? Have you had any lovely conversations and stories that you can share with us?
Yeah. I mean, like I said, despite all the adversity.
Yeah.
Um, I stood in twenty sixteen for local elections because I felt that I needed a platform for where I could help people. So my life journey pushed me this way, onto this platform, and I lost by twenty votes. And then again, something that comes in is resilience. So I thought, I'm not going to give up. I got up and brushed myself again.
Sure, you do not give up. I'll give you that a hundred percent, yes.
Um, I stood last year in twenty eighteen and I got elected as a councillor for North Ward. Um, I also became the group whip for the local group. I was a trustee on a local charity, Vivacity.
Oh, wow.
Which is a charity for sports, leisure, culture and heritage, to bring diversity to the board and and its users. And yesterday I got appointed as cabinet advisor.
Wow.
With portfolio for children's services.
This is just truly amazing. So you are absolutely in the driving force today. You stand as a, as an icon for people to understand and and follow. Is that correct?
And I get messages from women and men as well, all over the country, um, even here locally, wherever I go. A lot of people say to me, you really inspired us. Um, it's because you went into this field, this is why we've come into this field, or we want to come into this field. Because you did this and we thought if you could do it, I could do it as well. And only, uh, last week, um, I went to, um, see a friend and hadn't seen her for a long time. And she said to me, she goes, I envy the life that you live.
Really?
And.
And in what context?
And she goes, I, I, I look that you're always out and about, meeting people, socialising. But believe me, everybody, when they look at success, they think you've been lucky. But that is.
Anything but.
Anything but, yes, luck may have been there when you're in the right time at the right place. But it's hard work, passion, determination and resilience.
I love it. So it's so key to understand and add the last section of resilience into the process. Because life's going to throw things at you, what we call the curve ball. It's a matter of whether you can get up. Bruce Lee used to say, it's not about falling down, it's about how many times you can stand back up. Is that right?
Yeah.
Please, carry on, yeah.
And also for, especially for the viewers, especially here in Peterborough and the women from all backgrounds. We're very lucky that we've got, um, a group, an empowerment group. It's called Peterborough Women's Association.
I noticed, yes.
Ruxana Akhtar, uh, sorry, Ruxana Kozar, um, and Salma Latif. A big shout out to them both and Kerry Moore, I hope she's listening.
Yeah.
They are volunteers and also, um, they've got full-time jobs, they're carers, they've got children, family. They have been running this group for over a year and they have over two thousand women on that group.
My own sister's a member as well.
Of course. And there's a lot of women on there that share things, um, um, that want to obviously change or want, even if it's small things, where they want to know what's happening in the community or events that are going on. This is a message for, um, any organisation, for any individual that can support that group. Um, for me, I personally, it's one of my missions is to help that group establish it and become, um, an organisation and to be able to stand on its own feet and get recognition, um, for, for, for what they're doing.
Amazing. So in context, I'm very certain, uh, I'm sure if we have this conversation offline, we will definitely have a good, um, backing. And I'll probably assist as best I, best I possibly can. Now, I understand, I mean, we had, uh, a few weeks ago, we had Zameha, who was actually one of the, I think it was last month, actually, who's the founder of a recommendation. And that has a very similar energy about it, but this is about your local community. It's about individuals of how they can help each other. Would you believe, we were talking about you last night, after I came back from the, from the mayor's inauguration. And my sister, who's called Rena Wahihullah, she's probably tuned in or she'll tune in later, I'm sure. Um, she mentioned that she's a member of this group and she sees you actively assisting people quite regularly. So for that, I think it's very commendable, um, for that environment. Do you find that, where's your vision? What do you want to achieve in the years to come? Of course, without a doubt, you're going to be, you know, you are a motivating speaker, you are a person who's going to move in that direction. But what is the vision that you have in, let's say, the short term of the next two or three years? So that you can empower the people listening today even further?
I think you lead by example. So it's sometimes, yes, you can, um, talk about your personal story. You can, I can put these, I could personally move myself in my own career. But for me, the bigger picture is being able to tell my story to the wider masses for them to take the message and change their lives.
Wow. And I would say, your, your story, your conversation is very inspiring and very awe-inspiring and empowering. So in specific, could I suggest that I can hear that you're going to possibly do some kind of a roadshow of, of, of visualisation and actually help individuals on a one-to-one basis? Or do you want to be mascotting, uh, and forfacing other organisations of change?
I, I would like to, um, sort of speak to, first of all, with women in small groups. Um, because I believe that small groups is more empowering, um, for people to come out their shells. Um, it may be that, and also, uh, from my own, um, journey, sometimes I feel that help wasn't there.
Hmm.
Or I didn't know where it was.
Well, nobody was public for it, you know, they're not sharing it in total, yes, in front of you, yeah.
Yeah.
And so would it be viable for you to create some, is it, I mean, having a conversation, I'm thinking out loud on air. You are a magnet of information and more importantly, a magnet of influence and motivation for anybody who touch and around you. So in your next few years, I, you know, are there any direct visions that you're going to actually turn around and, and bring to the marketplace, probably to assist others? Have any thoughts?
I want to, I want to, um, be able to have a positive energy network across the country. I want to be able to deliver talks in towns and cities and events, um, whether it's corporate or whether it's, um, small businesses or whether it's just community groups.
Ah-huh.
And I want them to be able to live the happy, fulfilling life that they want.
That's a beautiful conversation. So actually realising that happiness is within and not outside, no material, but an internal spiritual happiness, yes. That's beautiful because I think, um, you were also getting involved in an organisation, I think you're touching, helping them, the Inspired Business Women. I think something that I co-founded with another young lady with, uh, called Angola from Abstract PR. And, uh, they already have a plan for such a thing. So it may well be a good join. I think that's going to be wonderful. So if I said to you, you've got a, a last message that you want to share to people who are listening today, who have maybe had these kind of adversities and debt, challenges, divorce, et cetera. I mean, just, you, you speak so beautifully, so eloquently. Would you give them some kind of a positive message out there?
I personally believe that it's your life, you live it. I mean, look at me, I'm very independent. I live my life. I live it for me. And life is all about choices. We don't live for others, we live for ourselves. So make choices that will make you happy and not others. And don't be afraid.
And don't be afraid, yes. And you're clearly that person. I think we've got a lovely message here from, um, we have Dee Garcha, who's saying, a wonderful to hear Shazia's amazing journey. And we have another message here on Facebook Live coming in from, uh, Sophia.
She's my sister. Hello, Sophie. She's my rock. She wasn't there. Waalaikumsalam. She supports me with my, um, boys. I'm very, very lucky. And this is another important thing. You need to identify your own network and that's your family and your friends. So whenever you need a break, sometimes, especially for the mums out there, sometimes you have children and you're overwhelmed, reach out and say, look, I need a break. And I'm lucky to say, I've got the best family and friends. I'm blessed with the best in every way.
Oh, God bless you as well. And that's such a, a poignant message to say that you should always have that order and organisation of somebody to, to lean on. You know, we, we forget the fact that it's a full-time job to be a mum, to be a dad, et cetera. Um, more so the mum than the dad, you know, the dad usually is the one who's been pushed out to, to stand on the, the conforms. Um, but in specific, being able to touch other lives by assisting, just by being there. Say, yes, drop the kids off or giving them a bit of time out. That's a wonderful message. And Angie Fenner, hello, my dear friend, Shazia Basir, and congratulations for last night. And also.
Hi, Angie. And, and, and we need to watch this space because the next person sitting in this seat will be Angie Fenner. Uh, she's a chair of, um, Ravensorp and, um, she does a lot of work with her community as well. She's another light worker that needs to be recognised for her work. So I'm looking forward to work with you, Angie.
Yes, absolutely. Hi, Angie. And she said, uh, you are a strong person. So God bless you as well. So we, would you believe the time just disappears like that? We've still got four minutes, don't forget, I'm not running you out. We've got plenty of time. So a message, if I ask you a question, we do tend to ask this to everybody who comes onto this planet. Now, we have, we've touched on the fact that you're trying to absorb and help and inspire other people, whether that be male or female, but in specific, in this current agenda, it's about the females. If I was to stretch out a little bit and go forward, this is a really lovely sort of ending thought. And I said that Shazia Basir, the mum, the independent woman, the inspirer, the daughter, the sister. What specifically, and the councillor, you know, the politician, what specifically would you like the world to remember you by, which we call the legacy that we're going to leave here? It's a hard one, not planned. But this is what the Salaam Radio Empower Hour is all about. It's about actually asking real, humbling, inspiring conversations that inspire and influence in a positive way to the next generation.
I, I'd like people to remember, um, me for my struggle.
For your struggle?
My struggle to inspire women. Because at the end of every dark night, there's a morning.
Wow. Just the true element of guru, because there's the dark to light. So after every dark night, there's always going to be that amazing morning. So we've been speaking to Shazia and, and she's been inspiring. If you've just joined the conversation, please do rewind and watch back on YouTube Live or alternatively on Facebook Live, um, on our series of the Empower Hour show. Now, you're in no doubt a light within our community and the Peterborough community, within the male and the female environment, specifically, the female specifically, but within the males, to see that you can do it. Does that make sense? Just to pull people up and say, yes, you can do it. You've been involved in education, you've been involved in inspiring individuals on a one-on-one basis. It's been truly humbling to have you here today, Shazia. And you, without a doubt, you're an advocate, I think, of of, of fighting against adversity in life, whether it's divorce, whether it's, um, even debt or an internal death, like we, you know, we've all, we've all been touched with. A truth that is the only real truth in life that we're all going to face in a positive way, um, and we should get ready for it. And the fact that you want to be remembered specifically for the, the individual who stood by people in times of struggle, who actually helped them up, gave them a, a, a lending hand to stand them back on their feet. Because indefinitely, that's the person I see in front of me today. Shazia, it's been an absolute pleasure to have you on this evening. Are there any ending thoughts on the Empower Hour that you want to share with people? What things should they be watching for that's going to come up soon?
Thank you very much, Sukhi, for having me on this wonderful, um, Empower Hour. And believe me, the positive energy in this room at the moment is unreal. It's been flowing. Um, yes, there's lots of. Um, yes, there's lots of lots of things that are going to happen. And we are all on different journeys and we all want to help people in different ways. Um, but one thing I want people, um, especially um to keep their eyes out open is for my TEDx talk.
Oh, now we're talking. And I know we're working together on trying to get that clear for everybody. So you want to talk on TEDx and we'll make it a permanent public conversation right now. So what would you be talking about?
Well, I just wanted to also share that just recently I undertook the TEDx Bootcamp training uh with Bilal, so I wanna give a shout out to Bilal and all everyone at PSA. Um, so I've taken that training and it's opened my mind to ways and concepts of how I can deliver this message. And I know you're gonna support me on it as well. And we're gonna work together. And this message, I hope, will not only be a TEDx talk, but it will go on to TED as well. And I hope I can be an author of a book, a prisoner of society.
Wow, what a title and one hundred percent. Um, these things I'm sure are gonna happen, Shazia. And you already have the backing of us without a doubt as an organisation, as the Inspired Group. And Sukhi Wahihullah, it's been a pleasure to have you today. Time has run out. The Empower Hour every Tuesday.